Not go to item three until 7:00 PM, is that true?
Well, I'll have something shipped to her tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Chair Skewes, did you have a time certain for 7:00 on item number three?
That's what the announcement says, time certain seven.
Then yes, you can start the meeting and do approval of the minutes.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:33 and go directly to item two, consider approval of minutes of February 26 and March 25. I have read through the 26th and found one type of graphical error. It is the word two, T-O, is spelled T-P. At one point, I'm not sure right exactly where that is. But other than that, I don't see anything wrong with February 26. Does anybody else have anything? Sylvia, can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can all hear you.
So that was for the 26th, you said there was an error, a typo?
Yes. The word two, T-O, is spelled T-P at some point. It's about three quarters of the way down the page.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
This is Miguel, I don't have anything.
This is Bob Reitz, I don't have anything.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve minutes of the 26th.
I see John, Commissioner Frick's hand up, but Commissioner Frick, it appears you are self muted. Oh, I see you now.
Okay. Am I still?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just was gonna say I'm abstaining because I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you.
I didn't hear what he said, he didn't have anything?
No, he's abstaining because he was not at the meeting.
Oh, okay. So anybody make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Bob Reitz.
Thank you, Commissioner Reitz.
I will second, this is Miguel Huerta.
Thank you, Commissioner Huerta.
Thank you, gentlemen. All in favor?
Aye.
Bob Skewes?
Aye, Bob Reitz.
Aye, Miguel Huerta.
Commissioner Boozer, it appears you are self muted. Commissioner Boozer?
This is Brandt Boozer.
Hi, Commissioner Boozer, how do you vote on the minute?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are we missing John?
Commissioner, abstain.
I abstain.
Boozer, aye, Reitz, aye, are we missing John?
I abstain.
All right. Looks like we have a passage of that. Miguel, you're gonna have to take over on the March 25th meeting, because I was not there.
Very well. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments, edits, changes to the minutes of the meeting?
Nope.
Hearing none, can I get a motion to that effect? Anybody want to move to accept?
This is Bob Reitz, motion made.
Thank you, Commissioner Reitz. Can I get a second?
I'll second it, Brandt Boozer.
Thank you, Commissioner Boozer. All right, calling for acceptance of the meeting minutes of the 25th.
Skewes abstains.
Bob Reitz, aye, approve.
And did I get the right date, was it 25th, 27th, sorry?
What, 25th, March 25th.
March 25th, okay. This is Huerta, aye, accept.
John Frick, accept.
Madam Sylvia, do we have enough to move on at this point?
Yes, Commissioner Frick has his hand up, Commissioner Frick.
Accept.
Yes, the motion passed.
Okay, in that case, Chairman Skewes, would you like the helm again?
I would like to take the helm again, except the meeting was posted for a time certain 7:00 PM on item three. And we've got 20 minutes.
So Commissioner Skewes, I would like to introduce Roxanna Stevens, who is in the audience. She is our new city attorney, so I'd like to give her a little bit of time to introduce herself to both the commission and the audience, and tell us a little bit about herself if you would so oblige.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you Sylvia. My name is Roxanna Stevens, I go by Rockthee Stevens. I'm from the Knight Law Firm out of Austin, Texas. I've been practicing, training, going on 18 years. And I'm extremely excited to work with the City of Sunset Valley and help the city move forward in accomplishing its goals.
All right, Roxie, thank you.
So Commissioner Skewes, we can take a short 10-minute break before the time certain, if you'd like to do that.
That's fine, you want to make it 15?
Sure.
Okay.
So please call a break and then return at 7:00 for the time certain hearing.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody, we're gonna take a 15-minute break until 7:00. And at that time, we'll take up item three. And while you're gone, please mute your buttons.
That's what I'm saying, Terry was here before, and I wonder if she can talk, I wonder if they can talk, because I'm not seeing. It's just it's all strange. I don't see anybody else on the camera, I should tell you, you're the chair. Careful. You're the only person in the camera. I'm wondering. So, first, what's the reason I did it? And then they'll talk to you there. But it's kind of like we're using the phone with a headset, so it won't be feedback. So the call is listen only, the volume's down on this.
Okay, we have unmuted all of the microphones for those people who have called in and don't show up on the screen. So if you would, please self-mute yourselves, so that we can reduce any background noise. But the organizers have unmuted all of the microphones. So Commissioner Skewes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I have unmuted myself, you can hear me, I take it?
Yes.
Okay. So you have 7:00 on your clock on the wall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's move on to item three. And open the public hearing to consider request for a zoning change at 4800 US Highway 290 West from single-family residential to neighborhood office. Item B on the schedule here is a presentation by staff, is that true?
Yes. So, Commission, what we have before you today is a request for a zoning change from a single-family residential to neighborhood office. The property is located at the northwest corner of Stearns and fronting US Highway 290 East. It is currently a platted 2.1 acre tract that is undeveloped. It is currently zoned, single-family residential. And the proposed use is a real estate office building, which prompts the request for a change to neighborhood office. So we had previously held a attempted to hold a meeting on March 25th, but because of COVID and the inability for any of us to be comfortable with virtual meetings at that time, we prompted to change the meeting. So the notice was posted, and we are in the public hearing phase. The applicant has provided a presentation that he has prepared. So I'm going to turn the screen over to the applicant to allow the presentation on the application and the intent to continue. Aaron, are you prepared?
Yes, I'm prepared. Thank you Commissioners, staff, residents for facilitating the meeting. I know this has been challenging for everybody. We have taken the interim time since this was postponed from the last meeting to make extra efforts in conversations with the neighborhood as well as tech staff and city staff regarding our intentions with the property. And I wanted to share a presentation with you, so let me see. Seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is kind of a modified version of what we've been having conversations with the neighbors on, and I just wanted to share with you. As stated, the request of zoning change to neighborhood office, according to the Flum neighborhood commercial was the original intention. We just wanted to show our intended zoning use was already part of Sunset Valley's intentional zoning change. We also wanted to show that by going to neighborhood office, because that's our actual intended use, that it's a lower impact than neighborhood commercial per the Flum. We also have determined that it's a natural line of development, where you see between commercial and residential. And that due to impervious coverage and access to the property, that all development is really gonna stay within what's already a natural bound you see in all the adjacent properties. We also did some studies regarding scale of the building and how we can make sure that we maintain the scale with some of the existing commercial that's already developed along the 290 access in relation to the residential. We've done several studies on access in and out of the property, because as brought to our attention by neighborhood, the main concern that everyone the main concern that people have with development is the proximity to this exit ramp coming off of 290 and how there's an inclination for people exiting to cut over all length of traffic to access the neighborhood. We're well aware of that, and we agree that it is a hazard, it is an existing condition. It's actually more of a hazard for access than it would be for our development purpose. But we have thoroughly Uh, but we have, uh, thoroughly with the neighborhood and agreed that we're willing to continue the conversation with Techstat around potential mitigation of some of this safety concern. Um, however, that, that's out of our capacity. So in doing so, we did a study of a couple, uh, ways to access the property just to show our willingness to design based on whatever Techstat and the city determines to be the proper course of action. And this was showing a one-way traffic pattern with the access coming directly off 290 with an exit that would have a right turn only exit back onto Sterns, looping the people back to 290. This reduces the number of contact points as it's only one entry and one exit. Uh, we also showed that the option for the existing access to be a two-way. We've done a study with a traffic engineer and had a conference with, uh, and through those conferences and studies, it was determined, uh, from Techstat originally that the one-way traffic flow, uh, would be the way to go. However, Techstat, um, is having some issues with their server. They've been, um, compromised and, and it's corrupt. So currently their systems are not operating and they're unable to produce from them the appropriate letters of, you know, as I'm walking you through it now, we're just, we're willing to explore all the options of what may be put forward. Um, and then the last option be a future secondary, uh, future point use access due to 4812 going through a zoning change as well. In the future, when that property is potentially up for development, we would delete what would be our current access point uh, and agree to a common access that would relieve the number of driveway access points along the 290 road. We also did a study regarding sightlines and maintaining privacy uh, for all the neighbors regarding, uh, our ability to go up to the, uh, uh, height limitations per the zoning requirements. Uh, the one area of concern is making sure that we maintain privacy for Mrs. Angeli's home, which is the adjacent property of 4812. Uh, in doing so, we did, um, our architectural conception that the building core, which are the common areas for E-res, the building, uh, don't require sightline and would actually create an opportunity to create a privacy screen for that. Uh, and this study here coordinates to the next slide, which I'm going to show you. We put up a drone to ensure that we're maintaining privacy sightlines. And you can see due to natural vegetation that we're not looking into anyone's property. This one right here is Mrs. Angeli's home, and that's why the design for the building would include the ability to, uh, avoid this particular sightline with intention. Uh, everything else seems to be, um, not any intrusion of privacy. We've also been looking at other ways to mitigate the scale and scope of the project through using Birmingham techniques around parking areas and the building itself um, to, to reduce what would look like the height of the building. Um, here is the site plan study with a one-way traffic pattern. And you can see here is 3290, exit on to Sterns to loop back around. Parking would be underneath of, this is a function of, uh, impervious coverage limitations. This is a two-way traffic pattern. You can see that a double Y drive that allows for entry and exit through the property per code requirement. Um, and over, it's what would be the potential opportunity for future, uh, joint use access where there would be a driveway here should this property be developed in the future. And this would be deleted with a connection that would bring through the same driveway. It could apply to both scenarios where there'd be an entry here instead. Uh, this is the concept that we're working on with Techstat. Um, again, parking would be underneath the building. We're looking at a combination of screening materials as well as Birmingham, which you don't see so much. But, uh, working with Barley and Pfeiffer Architects, who are renowned in the sustainable and green design principle. And that's our sole intention for working with them. We have, uh, utmost respect for them, and that's been our philosophy as developers. Uh, in your task, maintain sustainable concept. We are going to be one of users of the building. We intend to stay in this building along with my sister-in-law, who has a holistic nutrition practice, uh, in an engineering firm. So that's the intention for why we went to a neighborhood office zoning. I can stop the sharing and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
You want to, is, is that the end of the presentation?
Uh, yeah, that's the end of this presentation. Now, we are joint application for 4812. Um, we're the authorized agent to make application for, um, many conversations we've had with Mrs. Angeli as well as her son, who is in attendance to this meeting this evening as well.
All right, Sylvia, do you, does staff have any, uh, presentation to go along with this?
No, that's, um, staff's presentation was their report and then the presentation by the applicant. Um, Aaron, can you give me control?
Uh, yes, but what do I have to do here? Are you not able to take it back? Let's see.
Yeah, let's see. I got it.
Okay.
I, I guess I have a question right off of that. Does this mean that, uh, you would not be pursuing a neighborhood commercial, uh, zoning on, on this property? So.
This, this property, 4800 on the corner, is requested for neighborhood office because that is the use designed and, and that we're going to be developing for. And like I said, the purpose being that it's a lower impact, which we did with intention in consideration to the neighbors because I know historically there's been concern around development of the corner.
Okay, so, um, Sylvia, we, we would be dropping items five and six off of the agenda?
No, Commissioner, the, um, the items are standalone. Uh, this particular one is for 4800, which is at that corner lot, which is single-family to neighborhood office. And then, um, Mrs. Angeli's property and Mr. Lowcock is present.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
I see that at 4812.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, um, uh, having had the presentation, uh, we'll move into citizen comments. I, I guess Sylvia, you can see who has their hand up and who wants to speak or have they signed up to speak?
Yes, Commissioner Skewis. I will allow the Commissioners to speak first, and right now it appears Commissioner Frick has his hand up.
Commissioner Frick? Yes.
Well, can you turn the volume up again?
Commissioner Frick?
Could you tell me who the architect is again that you're using? Who is the architect?
Who's the architect, Aaron?
Uh, Barley and Pfeiffer. Peter Pfeiffer, Alan Barley. And Peter Pfeiffer's been, um, awarded numerically over the years for sustainable building technologies. He was, he's been a high proponent. He actually was involved in the Energy Star and Austin Energy Green Rating Programs.
Yeah, sound very familiar with him. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Reitz?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Simple, I got a couple of simple questions if it's appropriate time. How many square feet will this thing be and what's the height?
Aaron, a square feet and height? Aaron, you're self muted.
Hating this. Can't believe it.
Okay, the, um, the building size is limited to 15,000 square feet. However, they won't accomplish that due to the impervious cover limitations. And what's the building height?
What's it look like? Two stories or three?
Building height is currently at 32 feet.
Okay, that's, okay. Maybe you know this question, uh, the answer to this question. When was the future land use map approved? Because we look at 2016 was the last time this thing came up for a zoning change. And I'm curious as to the map approval that would allow this to have highway commercial, uh, or neighborhood commercial, I'm sorry. Um, and, and we're, this is less than that, so it seemed consistent, but I wanted to know when that was approved. Anybody know?
The map that's currently on file, uh, was approved in 2011.
2011, okay. So this has been around for quite some time to have it approved at this, for this type of use. And my other question for Aaron, I mean, I'm curious as to whether he's got any type of easement, uh, deal being proposed with regard to 4812. Is that joint driveway looks like a great idea? And so I'm curious as to the status of some type of easement that you would be negotiating or, or put into effect. You could probably do that now, but that's up to you and 4812, so I'm curious.
Correct, so I'm now somehow unmuted fortunately. We certainly have a willingness, and that's a conversation to still have with Ford and Mrs. Angeli. Um, part of the reason I would require that it not be something to be done in the immediate is due to the fact that it's still her single-family residence. There could be measures taken to mitigate privacy concerns. Um, and it's certainly an op, an option, and we're happy to, as like I said, um, utilize the existing access. And even if it placed it some, placed some type of covenant around when, if and when 4812 is redeveloped, that it require there be a joint use access, um, we could abandon the existing at that time.
Well, 4812 is requesting a zoning change tonight also, are they not?
They are, uh, and, and that is a, however, their, uh, use at this time is still residential.
Okay. Um, is that your first choice to do that joint access?
Well, I, you know, I'll admit in conversations we've been having with Techstat, they've been very clear in that, uh, how the access roads have been built in time along these highway corridors have been unfortunately done in, as independent development projects. So there's driveway after driveway after driveway, all of which create, uh, traffic hazard scenarios because you're creating more points of contact. So in reality, yes, I, you know, I believe the best solution in this case is a single access. However, um, like I said, to, to live in a residence, uh, and it's not something that we would be wanting to, um, you know, force the situation on at this current climate. You know, when, when time changes, if the property redevelops, we're willing at that time as well to take whatever additional financial measures to remove the existing and move towards the joint access.
Okay. Do you, do you have any plans, my last question, do you have any plans with regard to any improvements along Sterns Lane as far as what you would do? Curbs, sidewalks, or anything that either enhances the, or makes it better for the traffic and et cetera?
Yeah, so I, to be honest with you, I can't speak to it because we have not gotten response from anyone in the right-of-way department at City of Austin. Technically, that's the City of Austin right-of-way. Um, so this property is, is unique in the fact that we're working with Sunset Valley on zoning and development plans and approvals. But when it comes to right-of-way along Sterns, we're going to have to work through the conversation with the City of Austin as well. I will say, I, I don't know what they're going to require typically. City of Austin in new development, whether it's residential or commercial. If you're going to go through a new development, they're going to require, uh, sidewalk and curb. Um, and that's something we're going to have to explore when that time comes. We did, in our conceptual plans for the architectural site plan, as you can see, uh, shot before, because of our impervious limitations, um, there's this sizable amount of property that is being untouched as native land. So, uh, yes, it's towards the end of that. It's like the third or second to last slide. Um, so we've thought about in, you know, creating, whether it's a, a walking pathway or, you know, nature trail or something enhancement to the community itself, since we are at the corner. Yeah, keep going, it's further down.
I would, you never answered my first question. What's the height and what's the square footage?
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't being able to unmute, so I was typing it for Sylvia to say. But, so according to zoning, uh, office would be allowed to go up to 15,000 square feet. I can tell you now, every study we've done, due to the impervious limitation and parking requirements that are associated per square foot, there's no way we're going to get to 15,000 feet. Right now, we're somewhere in the 13 to 14 range. Um, and again, that, all this is dependent on actual site plan review and approval because there's a certain level of calculation and design that we haven't gone to yet because of the, the timeliness and expense. Uh, we need to have those conversations with city staff as we get to that point.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Werfel?
Hello, thank you. Uh, I have a few questions for Cody Stone. Mr. Stone? In your memo, I didn't see a conclusion or opinion. Are you familiar, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with the requirements that we need to review in order to move forward with a zoning change. Is that correct? Mr. Stone?
I don't, I don't believe he's in attendance. Did you see him in attendance here?
I, he's your, he's your engineer, not mine.
Right.
Yeah, no.
He's, he's not in attendance. Um, the, the issue that we're having, as I stated before, was that, um, so Scott Cunningham, who's a Techstat reviewer for our property, apparently is also the reviewer for Williamson County, Travis, Travis County and Hayes County. Uh, their systems have been down as a result of being corrupted by a hacker. Uh, and he's backlogged. Uh, I have another project with him that is still under review from December of last year.
That's Mr. Levy, is that Mr. Cunningham or Mr. Stone?
That's Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham, right, with Techstat. I'm asking a question of Mr. Stone, the engineer that submitted the memo from Alliance.
Okay, what, what, I'm sorry, what was it about his memo that was of question?
There's no conclusion, there's recommendations, but there's not a conclusion, there's not an opinion. So I was going to give him an opportunity to amend that memo now. But if he's not here, we don't have a chance to do that.
His, so his opinion is what is provided to Techstat is Techstat who creates the conclusion of what should be done.
Right, I understand that. But what I'm looking for is, I'm, I'm looking for him to opine on whether this project, given the traffic evaluation that he's done, has met requirement eight of our requirement. has met requirement eight of our requirements. And I don't need Tech Dot, I need him to opine on that, and if he agrees that we'll, that this project will meet that, I want him to stamp it with his P E stamp. And there's nothing in the memo that gets that far. It's kinda like the eighteen-twelve overture without cannons. It's close, not the end.
Maybe I'm missing something here, Sylvia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's his position to be able to put the stamp and say to the city, this is the way to do it. I thought that was a Tech Dot requirement.
No, I'm not asking for him to say this is the way to do it. I'm asking for him to opine whether or not this will create any adverse impacts on the traffic situation in the area. If he says no, that's what we need for him to say, and for him to opine and sign it. If he says yes, same thing, we need, we need a conclusion. He's got recommendations on how to handle an impact, on the impacts. But he doesn't say this is good to go, or this is gonna cause problems. That's what we're looking for.
Then there must be a note missing from his memo, because per the conversations with Tech Dot and he in a conference calling, uh, you know, they've provided all the information of their study, determined that it meets all the requirements, and they were waiting for to say, yes, this is good to go.
Right, I understand that's with Tech Dot. I'm asking for his opinion on whether or not this will cause a problem with section eight of our regulations.
I could have him, uh, adopt.
Join us, please?
I, you know, it's.
Could, could you have him join us? Is that possible?
Uh, could I have him join us? Let me see if I can get him on, on the phone.
In the meantime, Sylvia, I'm gonna mute and you can move on to the next.
Sylvia, could you mute me as well, so I don't, uh, get unstuck in?
Okay, um, Commissioner Frick?
Yes?
You had your hand up?
Oh, well, if he's on the phone, I can just wait.
Okay. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna give him an opportunity to, to get some information. Did you have a specific question?
Am I on?
Yes.
You can hear me? I wanted to ask about this, uh, these options from Mr. Cunningham on different ways to, uh, mitigate the traffic issue there coming off of the ramp on two ninety. He has option one, two, and three. I was curious to see which one Mr. Levy, uh, prefers. And why? Because it, it, uh, ultimately, uh, impacts, uh, egress and, and ingress into his property there.
Sorry, I, I, I tried Cody twice, he's not answering, and I, I apologize, I was unaware that we were gonna need him to speak at this meeting. Regards to any possible suggestions of mitigation of the exit, as I've said to the neighbors as well, uh, several times, that we're willing to, to go with whatever is suggested for the sake of, uh, traffic and safety concern. It's pretty evident and clear that this situation is not, um, it's an existing condition. Uh, what Cody has been putting forward in his memorandum and the conversation we have with Tech Dot is the, the minimal impact that this development proposal creates, uh, does not actually change the condition that's already existing. I've expressed my willingness to, uh, push with Tech Dot through to do whether it's extended lane, pylons, temporary pylons, uh, barriers, barriers, any of such, prevent people from cutting over, even if it meant that to access our property, people had to do a full loop around from Brody back through Westgate. At which point, it was brought to my attention that all of those measures are technically less safe, um, that they've done those in other areas and found that they've been removing them as a function of people just riding over pylons, hitting barrier. So, uh, purpose of why I showed the multiple, uh, traffic patterns is because we're willing to work with whatever, uh, whatever is approved, whether, uh, through, both through Tech Dot, uh, and, and you just related municipalities. It's less a concern for me than it's, than it is for others. Did that, uh, did that answer the question? I'm sorry.
Sylvia, is there anybody else with their hand up?
Commissioner Werthel has his hand up. Commissioner Werthel, you are self-muted. There you go.
Hello, thank you. Ms. Levy, you, you just, you just stated what I was looking for. Which is, it, it seems like Mr. Stone's opinion is that the traffic conditions that exist will not be exacerbated by minimal development on this corner. However, that's not in his memo. That's what we need, we need something to that effect, one way or another. Or him to come in, on, you know, come here and then be willing, say that he's willing to stamp it later, right? So that's, that's all I'm looking for, is some, some clear concise opinion on, on how he thinks this is gonna play out. So I just wanted to pass that on, that, that you, you stated what I'm looking for.
Yeah, and I guess that's why I was being, uh, was confused about what we were reiterating this previously, because I've been in those conversations and, I'm well aware of what they've been saying to me. I, I thought that that was clear in the memorandum. If, if you're not seeing that, I totally understand and I continue, uh, to try to get a hold of him now while we're still in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Chairman Skewis, there are no other commissioners with their hands up, so if you'd like to open it up to public comment, we can, um, start taking hand raising. Oh, Commissioner Frick raised his hand. Sorry, Commissioner Frick?
Okay.
Yes, I, I wanted to ask you, Aaron, are you familiar with the email of five-six twenty-twenty? Where Scott Cunningham, uh, offered three different.
Yes. So, I, let me explain, and, and, uh, um, I'll be as clear as I can, I'm, I'm being transparent. So we had, we had a conference meeting, uh, prior to that date, uh, in which Cody's memorandum, which you can, it, I'm sure, be sure, and I don't have the memorandum in front of me, I apologize, but I do believe he spoke to, in the memorandum, our conference call that we had, where we went through all the scenarios and came up with the determination that those are not safe scenarios. And then, uh, in, in the weeks following, as Cody was touching with Scott to find out if he was gonna get back to him regarding memorandum, Scott sent that email, and it was almost as if the conversation didn't happen. Um, and unfortunately, I think it's just a function, like I said, of his workload, um, and how, uh, how bogged down they are in, with their system. Yeah, you wanna scroll the memorandum, you can look to see if it, it should mention that we had that conference call. So, uh, Cody and I were actually both completely confused by that email, that specific email, because we had already played those scenarios, and Scott was the one who told us that they weren't the way to go.
Well, he, he had, he has three different options.
I've got Cody calling me right now, if that's okay.
Commissioner Frick, are these the three alternatives that you're talking about?
No. This, uh, what I have here is, uh, I guess it must be a letter maybe from Carl Pearson, or, no, wait. I'm not sure who this is from, but it's, it shows, uh, an overview of, of the site, Google, uh, Google Earth, and it has three different options. One is a concrete barrier, which would take to the traffic from the ramp all the way and bypass, uh, this property altogether, it's like to me, down and turn around, come back to Westgate, and then stay in that fall right lane to enter. There's another one where they're doing some, uh, and, and also, for me, concrete barriers are very dangerous anyway at those rates of speed. Uh, the other two have to do with closing off lanes, uh, and, and whatnot. And I was just wondering if you're familiar with this, Aaron, and which you prefer.
So, I, I think there's a little confusion still. As I've stated, we're willing to go with whatever route is the approved and suggested course of action. But we did have that email from Scott Cunningham, following our conference call, was both confusing to myself and Cody here, our traffic engineer. Um, and he can speak to that, but I believe more directly, uh, was it Commissioner Werthel had some, uh, questions for him, is that correct? And I don't mean to divert the conversation, but while I have Cody here on the phone, I think we're, we're talking about all these traffic concerns.
Sure, I can speak to it. Um, you want me to start from the, from the analysis that we did?
Can everyone hear him, by the way?
Commissioner Werthel?
I can hear him.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we talked through a lot of these alternatives with, uh, Scott Cunningham with Tech Dot. And the challenge, of course, is that, that ramp and how it already, already allowed access to Stern's Lane at that location. And so what we wanted to do with alternatives that would address any safety issues, look at what kind of setups could we have with the driveway? That, um, you know, keep the safest, uh, way to access the facility and don't limit access to residents in the area. And so what we came up with was looking at a one-way operation, there while maintaining the current ramp act access. Allows like the base between the ramp core and the actual driveway. Uh, so instead of vehicles having to exit the ramp, cross lanes to get to Sterns, they have a little base to get to the actual driveway itself. The challenge with putting something like a barrier there would be, well, one, vehicles might run over it and it causes a bigger safety concern. Uh, the second would be if you put dummy sticks or things like that, uh, that's a maintenance thing that Tech Dot has to handle, and also vehicles would run over that. And so, uh, we wrote up a letter that talks about those different alternatives. Scott, Scott was reviewing it for approval. Um, he came back with some other alternatives that, that he was talking with the South Area Office on. But from our discussions at the initial meeting, um, he was on board with that type of circulation plan. So that was, that pretty much covers it. I mean, we, we also looked at how many trips would actually be generated by the facility, and it's, you know, it's a very low number. It's not a number that would call for, um, like, a deceleration line or a right turn line.
Commissioner Werthel, was there a, a particular question for Cody that you were posing before? Sorry, I, um, yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Levy. Hello, Mr. Stone, Commissioner Werthel speaking. Um, I'm not asking about Tech Dot, I'm asking about one of the, one of the requirements for zoning, zoning change that we need to satisfy ourselves with is that the proposed change in zoning will not result in traffic conditions or vehicular circulation that jeopardizes the, the city's health, safety, welfare, environment, things like that. So, I, I understand what you're saying about the trip generation and the Tech Dot requirements. The question that I posed earlier to Mr. Levy was, in your opinion, but then this is not in your memo, in your opinion, does this zoning change, will it have an impact on the traffic conditions in the area?
Not with the, um, planned site plan and the predicted land uses there. I do not think that would have adverse effects.
Okay, are you willing to amend, are you willing to, are you, are you willing to amend and stamp your memo with that?
I put my engineer seal on that, that memo that I currently have.
Right, but are you, are you willing to amend the memo and put your seal on it?
Yes, I'm, the memo that I currently have and, and how we looked at all of the alternatives in there for safety.
Right.
I, I would, I'm that, yes.
Cody, I think he's asking more directly, uh, the fact of, does this not add any adverse concern of, of safety for this use?
Yeah, yeah, I understand, and that's something where we're always looking at in our engine judgment. It's, it's always coming back to safety. And so when I put my seal on this, it's, it's approving that I, that safety there is mitigated and not harming anybody with doing everything we can for that driveway location. With the alternatives, it is having vehicles come onto Stern's Lane, which is a very low, low-volting road, and using the facility that they, that currently operates there. Um, it's an undue amount of traffic at a driveway location. Uh, and anything that would necessitate, um, bigger measures to be performed.
Okay, so, um, I'm hearing that you're willing to make that opinion, state that opinion in your memo.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, but I believe what he was just saying in that is that when they put their seal on it, they're stating that it's not creating any adverse safety concern by sealing it. If you need it in a, in a clear sentence statement, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, and, and I'll look at the balance, see what I can do. I'm also trying to address Tech Dot's because it ultimately, Tech Side has to approve that memo as well. And so, there's, there's two things. I mean, safety is, is number one. So we're making sure the alternatives that we're proposing aren't gonna create a safety issue. And if it, if it makes it more clear, that's something I can certainly address, um, to update within the memo.
And, and let me, let me explain, I'm not, I'm not trying to be dense or obtuse or, or being, you know, nitpicky, but we do have, we do have certain requirements in the Land Development Code findings that are required for the zoning commission to move, to make it recommend for approval, to, to, to the council. And, and, you know, they're, they're laid out pretty straightforward, there's ten of them. And it says, these are the things you should find, and, and the applicant has the burden of meeting each one. And, you know, we, as the zoning commission, can't ignore any of them, you've got to meet all of them. Nor can we add any, we can't raise the hurdles, we can't add hurdles, but we have to make sure you, you meet every hurdle, you know, you clear every one. And that's what I'm trying to do. So what I'd like for you to do is take a look at the Land Development Code, and then we're working with two sets of regulations. There's the safety, the traffic design, the, all of the things that Tech Dot requires. Then there's the other requirements that we have to live under, that the zoning commission have to live under, that found, that are found in the city's Land Development Code. And I'd like for you to address specifically land, the Land Development Code requirement eight in your memo. The, I understand, I, you've, you've handled all the Tech Dot stuff just fine, but we need something we can hang our hat on if we're going to approve this thing, saying there is a professional engineer that has stood up and said, yes, this will meet that requirement. yes, this will meet that requirement. We're not experts in the field. We are going to depend on others, such as yourself, to lend us some guidance. But if that guidance isn't there, then how do we say that you've met that requirement? I hope I'm making myself clear and why I'm asking for this. It's simply going by the book.
And knowing the ordinance, so, you know, I can look back at that specific ordinance and review it because, you know, I have to define, you know, diligence to ensure that it's appropriate to make that with the safety, health and safety. They're not, they're not issued, but I gotta make sure I can see that memo.
Right, no, I understand.
So, so I believe I can. But I'll review with the specific code and address that, that code in the memo.
Okay. And that's all I'm asking. Again, it's just, we need to go through these 10 requirements. That's one that's always hung us up. If we can clear that hurdle, that would be good.
That makes sense. I'll, I'll take a look at that and and provide an update with this.
Thank you, sir.
Is there, is there anyone else that has direct question for Cody while I have him on the phone? Because we don't have to keep him on the line for too long?
This is Chairman Skewis. I think that, I have a question that may relate to that, to his expertise with Tech Dot. And, and that is that I believe that the Tech Dot preliminary approval of the use of the curb cut on 290 Frontage Road assumes that Stern's would be the entrance. And entrance on 290, exit on Stern's, which is opposite of what the Tech Dot preliminary approval was for. Can you speak to that?
Are you referring, are you referring to an old approval from previous year?
Probably. Been around a long time.
Yes, that's a great question. And it's something that we discussed with Scott Cunningham at the time. One of the things that was strange to us about that approval of using Stern's Lane is that gore point, the distance between the ramp and the actual roadway for using Stern's Lane than the driveway. But part of that came out of, you don't want vehicles exiting that driveway because it creates another conflict point, which can introduce safety concerns. And so to mitigate that impact, we look at a one-way operation through the driveway, kind of a circulation pattern. So that they were still using Stern's on the way out and not introducing the least number of conflict points. So it is something that is different from that original memo, but it's something we did discuss with Tech Dot. Because the use along Stern's Lane actually presents more of a safety issue because of its closer proximity to the ramp gore.
It seems that everything, everything's kind of up in the air with, with Tech Dot and whether, you know, how they feel about this totally. I mean, you've got some verbal, but you've got nothing in writing that says that they've given their stamp of approval to anything, right?
Right, and that's the unfortunate situation we're dealing with on multiple projects and Cody can probably be good as well because of Tech Dot being systemed down and hacked in. So the pipeline is certainly being stretched.
Yeah, it's been a challenge to get these things moving forward. I know Scott had gone to the area Tech Dot engineer there to look at, you know, the ramp because of its proximity to Stern's Lane and the driveway. And I think he was asking for that area officer that he's waiting back on.
All right. Anybody else on the council committee have a question?
Commissioner Frick had a question.
Okay, one thing Sylvia, the Ingrid Morton microphone.
That's me.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I didn't understand that. What was that question?
The Ingrid Morton microphone is on and causing some cross-traffic in the audio. Can you mute them for a minute?
Yes, I muted them.
Thank you.
Can I, can I let Cody go? Does anyone have any further questions directly for Cody?
John Frick, did you have a question for Cody?
It appears he's offline.
Yeah, it appears we've lost his connection. Okay, do any other commissioners have any questions for either the traffic engineer or the applicant?
This is, this is me, Kilwata. I do not.
I just, I just have one question for the commissioners. Just in that, if, if it's determined that the approval from Tech Dot and getting this updated memorandum are the only items that are potentially obstructing a zoning change, I don't really know how Sunset Valley's processed, but rather than a complete denial, could, would we be put in a position of pending, you know, update items?
I believe that to be true. I mean, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't generally deny. We would just postpone, table it. Is that not true Sylvia?
That's true. The council could, the commission could table the item. There, in zoning, there really isn't a conditional approval that you can give because it's, it is a yes or a no. So it would be tabled to the next meeting. If the commission finds that they can't make a decision because they don't have the Tech Dot letter, then it would be tabled.
Okay, I see Mr. Frick is back. Do we have another question for Mr. Stone before I let him go?
Commissioner Frick, you are self-muted.
I'm sorry, I somehow got disconnected. My question was on this memo from Mr. Cunningham showing the, the three different options of traffic routing around the property. One of them being a concrete barrier separating the lanes there on 290 the access. And I was just wondering if you're familiar with that and which one of the three options you and Mr. Levy have discussed and think might be best?
I think you might have missed that conversation, but I'll let Cody speak if he wants to speak to it.
Sure. We did look at the barrier option and that worked. In our discussions with both Tech Dot and also in the memo, the challenge with the barriers separation is a couple of things. Actually, a few things. One being safety, vehicles potentially hitting a barrier, whether if you are a temporary dummy stick barriers or a concrete barrier. And the second problem would be the circuitous movements that vehicles would have to make to get to Stern's Lane and also the local area development. So the additional access would be changed. And then the final with the challenge would be maintenance of the facility. So all of that would cost more money for Tech Dot to actually maintain with some of these other challenges. So it does present a lot of issues producing that barrier, and that's why we recommended the current ramp gore form with a one-way operation through the facility. Does that address the question on the concrete barrier?
Yes, yes. So which, which entry, so you're, you have the site plan with the two-way traffic and that's a wider driveway, right? Then you have the one-way where parking garage, past these additional surface parking spots and then on to Stern's. And then you have this shared access traffic flow, which I kind of, to me, just looks like a bunch of cars pile, gonna have a big pile up there. Somehow that's supposed to be, would be worked out as a way to get into the next property, which would that also, would that be the, that would be the commercial, right? Not the office. That would have the next property.
I thought the question that you have were the mitigation of the exit ramp.
Yes, it was. And he talked about that, but so there's definitely different options. So I keep seeing the, you know, the options of the shared traffic flow versus, you know, the different things and then Tech Dot has theirs and I mean, I don't understand how we and the citizens in the area there can really make determination when there's kind of all these options floating around. With that, I guess I'll pass on to the citizens there.
Can I, is it all right if I go ahead and let Cody go at this time?
I believe so.
Okay. Cody, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, take care.
So before, before we go into citizen comments, I know we have citizens waiting to talk. But it, it looks like Cody still has some work to do to satisfy item eight on our list. And rather than go through citizen comments tonight, it, it might be best if we step back and table this one until our next meeting and at which time hopefully he would have supplied that information to satisfy number eight and Commissioner Huerta. Does that sound reasonable?
I have a question.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Reeds has his hand up.
Okay.
I understand the, the, hold on, let me get there. I got so many documents. The Cody Stone memorandum, but how is that affect us with regard to these other item in our agenda packet from Thrower Designs, land planners, whereby they make the conclusion that all, all 10 of our items that we're supposed to review on, including number eight, they come to a conclusion that it's acceptable? So I'm kind of asking my fellow commissioners, what's the thought process on it? Because it seems like we're throwing out something that we asked for, got, and has been certified by somebody else, Thrower Designs. Not that I have to rely on it, but I'm, want to know the thought process.
I can, I can take that. This is Miguel. The the thought process on that is Thrower Designs has come to the conclusion, but there's no, there's nothing behind it. It's like making an unsighted argument in court. I want to keep things where, you know, that's readily understandable. And one of the things that the Land Development Code says that part of the application for requirements, for amendments initiated by the property owner is, you know, when you get down to C9, says any other relevant information requested by a member of the council or zoning commission. And such information may include, but is not limited to, preliminary plans, site building plans, a traffic impact study. So if you take a look at the Land Development Code, page 2-7, that's, that's where that requirement comes from and we have in the past asked for, and I think Mr. Lingerfelter's memo or presentation was, was, went through the previous applications. That has been something that we've consistently done for the last, you know, so many years. So if we, you know, I'm, I'm not going to treat this applicant differently from anybody else, either adversely or to their benefit. I'm gonna go by the book. And in order to meet those requirements that we talked about, those 10 requirements necessary for the applicant to meet, this is one that we've kind of established. This is what we're looking for. And Thrower Designs, while their land planners are not PEs, I'm looking for a professional engineer's sealed document saying, this is a traffic study. This is what my opinion is, and it's not gonna hurt the folks. And then once we, you know, we do not have the, I've said this before, we do not have the ability to add any other requirements. If, if they can show conclusively that it's not gonna hurt the, the area, then our job is to make that recommendation to city council. So I mean, with all due respect to Thrower, they're just the wrong people. You're asking for, you're asking your podiatrist to give you an opinion on a root canal.
Thank you for that explanation. That's helpful. Someone, people submit things to you that you take for face value and then next thing you know, you have to question it, and that's the purpose. And that's our job. So I, that's very helpful to me.
And again, I'm sorry that, you know, we've been doing this for a long time, you know, some of us have been here for a couple decades on this commission. And, and we have history that you may not. You will eventually have it, but you don't have it now.
Well, it's also helpful if we, you know, if we told the applicant that that's necessary so that it's clear to them when they produce it, because if we're gonna, you're gonna submit something that is not deemed to be valid, like you say, a citation without authority, that's, that's, you know how we lawyers are about that. And so that's very helpful to let them know how we, how we view it. So that's the purpose of the discussion.
And I understand that. The, the issue though is, you know, with some of the other requirements, I'm, I'm accepting Thrower's information straight out. But we did tell the applicant at the last meeting that this is what we would be looking for and that it had been the issue upon which previous applications had gotten snagged. So the applicant knew that, that section, that, you know, requirement eight was in play and that they needed to address that. Or at least the applicant should have.
And Throwers, and I'm not, and I'm not completely disregarding Thrower either. Because on the other requirements that don't require that level of of supporting documentation, I've accepted what they've said. So, you know, there we are. And it looks, I'm going to be quiet because it looks like Mr. Levy is raising his hand.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll be clear, and I agree with everything exactly as you're saying it. I want to, I want to, first of all, I don't want to throw Thrower Design under the bus. I want to be clear, they are professionals. They they put a presentation together far as support for meeting all the requirements because just as Cody has stated, when he puts your seal on something, that is what he was saying. Now, I agree with you that if you want an adopted memorandum to speak very specifically to your point of item number eight in the code and have that written into his memorandum with his seal, we're certainly going to update that. And I think that that's why Thrower said that we've met all the requirements because he saw that memorandum as well. In relation to what was brought up, you had mentioned that we, as the applicant, were told in the last meeting what would need to be our postponed, so we actually didn't have any conversation. We're very clear on what we needed to do. Unfortunately, as I've said, Tech dot has just been dragging their ability to get out the items they need to. However, everything he needed to, and I will certainly speak with him in the morning about getting an update of that memorandum, just to be specifically specifically to the code item that you're speaking of.
That that does raise a question, Mr. Levy. Actually, but but it's for Ms. Carillo and Sylvia and Ms. Stevens. And, okay, and that is with, I don't have the Land Development Code memorized, but I know that for alcohol permits, we often make a recommendation for it to be approved on the condition that the Texas Alcohol, you know, T A B C grants them their their license and that they meet the training requirements. In this case, it looks like we're waiting for a state agency that is moving slowly. Is there something special about the alcohol permit as opposed to this where we can make a conditional recommendation to the council saying that if by the time they get there, to council, that is, Tech dot acts, then, you know, we can go forward. So that's just a question. I really don't know the answer. That's why I'm turning to the the folks that I know.
Well, Commissioner Werthe, I've never had a conditional recommendation from a zoning commission to a council. I've had special permit conditions applied, but they really had something that was subjective and special to the site offense, screening, or something like that. I've never had an approval conditional upon. It's always been a a yes or a no. But if Sunset Valley has done that in the past and is comfortable, I'm sure precedent has been set. I will defer to Roxy for that.
Thank you, Sylvia. And I apologize because I'm new to Sunset Valley, and I don't know what the practice has been in the past. I will say that if you start issuing conditional recommendations, you're going to have to start doing it for in all cases. And that's where the problem therein lies. So if you're requiring additional information and you have the ability.
Roxy, we lost you. Roxy. Looks like she got disconnected. She shows offline, so hopefully reconnect back. Aaron?
Yeah, I just have one other question, and thank you, Commissioner Werthe, for bringing up that question. We're willing to accept whatever you decide if it's a postponement until the items are brought forward. Probably acceptable, and I understand that completely. I have a question as to why we wouldn't go ahead and hear the neighbors at this point. Because it still sounds like, and as you as commissioners pointed out, that we really addressed all the items required for this, aside from this one particular item, which unfortunately is just out of our hands at this moment. But I I'm curious as to why we wouldn't take the opportunity while we're here to hear some of the neighborhood comment.
I, Chairman Skewis, I would be willing to do that. I assume that you've heard most of their opinions already and and have responded to them. But we can hear them again. Was just making a point that we can go through all the citizen comments and still come to the same conclusion that item eight is is still deficient.
Right, I just wanted to be clear and certain that if there are items or questions brought up by the neighbors that, you know, maybe type more conversation of what's going to happen here, that we've been very transparent in wanting to have those conversations. And I'd hate to get to a point where we've then addressed item number eight, haven't heard from anybody, then come to another meeting in a month or whenever your next scheduled meeting would be, hear other comments that then create new conversation that we could have maybe addressed, you know, prior to that time.
Okay, very good. Glad to do that. Sylvia, do we have a list? Or I noticed that some are up on the screen. Are there others that are signed up?
I have the ability. Folks just need to raise their hands. And I'm going to set the timer at two minutes or whatever timeframe that the commission would like.
Two minutes sounds fine.
Okay.
By the way, this is Roxanna Stevens, and I apologize, I'm back. I think there's some storms going on and my Wi-Fi is went out. But it's back on.
Welcome back.
Chairman.
Before you move on, I didn't know if you needed, if you were heard, what I what I was able to say.
Come to your conclusion there for Commissioner Werthe, please.
Yes, if I may. And basically, the best practice would be to obtain the information if possible and make a solid recommendation rather than offer conditional recommendations, because then that's something that you would have to continue doing from here on out.
Thank you, thank you. Chairman. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Would it be possible to have, as people comment, if they have specific items on the on the list of 10 that they want to address, fill us in as to which, you know, what they're talking about? In other words, if they if they want to talk about anything other than eight, we know what eight is. But if, for example, you know, if the community best interest in terms of public health, safety and welfare, item five, they simply say they're addressing item five if they can. I think that would be, that would be helpful as we take citizen comments.
Sounds good if they can organize themselves to do that and do it in two minutes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, John, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Levy, if this this presentation, which is very nice, by the way, that you guys have put together, has that, has the community seen this too, or is this something new?
Been shared.
We've seen since the packet was put together for zoning?
Yes, this has been presented to the over, at this point, well over a month ago. I mean, we've been in, we've been in conversations coming up the last meeting.
Well, okay.
All right, at this time, Sylvia, I'm going to go ahead and recognize the former mayor, Terry Callen. If if you can, since you're one of our citizens, let you speak first.
Thank you, Chairman Skewis. I appreciate that. And good evening. It's been an interesting discussion. I will be brief. And in regard to Miguel's request to reference the 10 items, I don't have them in front of me, but there's four issues. And one of them is number eight. So it doesn't mean number eight, and that's all I'll say about it. You guys know that. There's the issue that we all agree on is that it's unsafe now because of the the speed of the traffic, the volume of the traffic coming off that ramp that goes down to the Brody, Brody Lane. And Sterns is actually closer to the ramp than the adjacent property. The third issue I have is the use of Sterns. First is Sterns Lane is not in Sunset Valley. So it's kind of a, and it's kind of a flippant question, but could City of Austin approve a development plan that Sterns residential street in Sunset Valley was going to be the exit for it? So you need to think about what the jurisdictional issue. I want to say something nice about the plan. The impervious cover on the, and this is a very critical area in regard to pervious cover. The water that flows under this lot emerges near Borden Springs. And it's very important that 18% be protected. And I want to thank Aaron, Aaron Levy and his firm for taking that into account, including and submitting a plan that is 18% or less. And Aaron, I think you also said you weren't going to ask for variances to that plan going forward in terms of impervious cover. You may have other kind of building variances if it's approved, but not impervious cover. So if this is approved, I would like it to be down then to the agreement that impervious cover will be at or less than 18%. And that you won't ask for variance. And that that would be part of the change in zoning agreement. See if I have another item here. Yeah, I know that most of the, that the the traffic issue is the overriding issue. There's three options. I'd like to say, recognize again, at all, everybody's been trying to work better on this. This has not been an adversarial situation. We all want the quality development that Aaron has, but we want the traffic. We don't want an unsafe, a situation made more unsafe. And we want the traffic off Sterns Lane. I do like the idea of the joint use. I wish that could move right ahead. And that might be included in whatever, whatever the disposition of this is. Ever because the, that Aaron office, that it will revert to that at a future time. Anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. Does anybody have their hand up?
I don't see any other hands up. So if the public would like to comment, please raise your hands on the I see Commissioner Frick.
Ingrid Morgan.
Carl.
Carl.
Okay.
Can you say your name for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Colonel Pearson, Boston resident. Sunset Valley. Everything's pretty much already been discussed. I do want to put one thing real quick.
Hold on, Carl.
There's a lot of feedback coming from your microphone. There's a horrible echo.
Let's just try this. The main issue that may help clarify, Commissioner Frick, is those three alternatives that you saw. I can't speak to whether they existed before. I spoke to the Tech dot engine engineer, Mr. Cunningham. And he was a very, he said he was real busy. He didn't say anything about a half, but he did say he was real busy. But he touched on time and generated those three alternatives just because I picked up the phone and called him one day to help clear up the traffic issue. And really to ask if, you know, when or if any permission from Tech dot had been forthcoming yet. So to my knowledge, no, no permission has come yet. The developer, you know, the applicant even believes that we need to have permission before we proceed. I just, we really need to make sure this thing is safe. If you saw those three things, you also saw that picture that we've had a while ago of the cars cutting across. That's a common occurrence. Some of your own city council people came there and met with Terry a little while back, and they saw that very thing happening that day. So I just don't buy that having commercial access right there. If people are allowed to come off the Brody exit, is going to be more safe or even just as safe. It's going to be dangerous if we start allowing that. And that's my two pieces. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Frick. Commissioner Frick.
Yes?
You had your hand raised?
I tried to turn it on.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who have comments? Hey, Chairman Skewis, there are no other public comments at this time.
All right, thank you, Sylvia. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to item four, which is the zoning commission's recommendation on this site that we've been discussing. Miguel, I don't know how you feel Miss Sterns, Miss Stevens' recommendation to us that that we not do conditional recommendations to the council.
I understand that position. Like I said, we may want to go back. I am not going to to ask for a conditional recommendation tonight. But that that does mean we need to go back and take a look at the way we handle our alcohol permits. But but for tonight, if if I'm going to take Miss Stevens' recommendation.
Commissioner Werthe, could it be that alcohol permits are conditional upon the zoning itself? And so you can't, it's sort of a chicken in the egg, which is why you have a conditional approval. If the zoning is there, you can't get the permit.
It very well might. Right, no, I, that's why I was asking. Because I I believe that there's probably some gotcha somewhere in the alcohol permitting process.
Yes.
Or in this process that says you can't do it the way you do others. I just don't know where that, where that, like I said, I don't have the Land Development Code memorized.
My experience has been the applicants bring the T A B C application down to the development office and ensure that the zoning is appropriate before we can sign off on it. So if it's not, we can't sign off. So it is a chicken in the egg. But for a development such as this, where really it's a it's a driveway or something like that, although it's a state agency, because he already has an entitlement off of 290, there really is nothing that would prevent a an approval or a or a table to the next item. I think the the issue is one of safety, and we've heard that issue. But I'd like to remind the commission that he already does have an access off of 290.
Well, I think the problem is that the access on 290 is is not liked by anybody. Tech dot, City Sunset Valley, probably Mr. Levy himself does not like the access at that point. I don't know. But it's problematic. And and as Miguel has pointed out, we don't have, we don't have somebody with a a state with a state authorized stamp of approval saying that it is safe. Anybody on the council, on the committee have something to say on the subject?
Well, if I gather, this is Bob Reitz, if I gather where we're at, except for that number eight and getting it clear, this is being viewed favorably. Is that a fair statement?
I'd say that's a fair statement.
And I also thought that Mr Levy seems okay with deferring this to get clarity on that. Is that, I mean, because alls I thought was he wanted to hear the citizen comments to make sure he doesn't have to keep repeating or otherwise addressing issues that, you know, come up new, get as many things on the table to make this efficient. So I think we've accomplished that, so I think that's good. So if the Text dot is our big issue for us to go forward and that still, despite his efforts, needs more work, then it seems clear that we should be tabling this until that is clear. And if you need a motion to that effect, I'll make it.
I concur with Bob with, I concur with Bob with one minor point and that is, we've got Text dot, the Text dot issue, but we've also got the Cody Stone issue.
And I thought one would take care of the other two. They virtually dovetail together. I can't see one being resolved and the other would be a conflict. That's just my thought process. So it's, that's why I kind of put Text dot paramount. But that's, they go one hand in hand to me, so.
It, they almost do, but it would be, like going through what you need to do at the secretary of state to develop the corporation and then doing what you need to do at the SEC to privatize and get the securities out. Slightly different regulations over the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're looking at Sunset Valley's regulations and Text dot regulations.
Yeah.
But you're correct, they are, they are very similar.
Well, I'm hoping that Text dot's lead will help us resolve it.
I'm not so sure Mr Levy has the confidence that Text dot, given another month, will come through with some sort of ruling on this.
It's, I'm less concerned of an actual ruling versus the actual documentation of it in your hands. I think that's where our concern is, the timing of that. As far as the ability to have access to the property and making an amendment to the memorandum from Cody Stone, all those issues I think are not of concern. It can certainly be addressed as quickly as possible. I think it's more just when we will have a stamp sealed something from Text dot for you to review. So postponement is, we totally understand and I'm accepting of all of that. We're just at the whim of, you know, a state department.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Haven't heard a second yet. We have a motion disabled.
Was that Commissioner Boozer's motion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Reitz?
Commissioner Reitz.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second Commissioner Reitz's motion.
Is there any further discussion on the commission? First call to vote.
Commissioner Boozer.
Hi.
Commissioner Frick. Commissioner Frick. On the motion to table. Commissioner Huerta.
Aye.
Commissioner Reitz.
Aye.
And Chair Skewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Frick, yourself muted.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All five ayes.
All right, moving on to item five, the hearing to consider the zoning change for 4812, Highway 290 West to neighborhood commercial. I'll open that hearing now and move to a presentation.
Commissioner Skewis, I'm going to defer to the applicant Ari and Aaron and Mr Lowcock. Mr Lowcock is a power of attorney for Mrs Angeli. Because they're tabling the other items, does that affect this item? Do they want to proceed or would they like to table this item as well?
I believe that'd be a call of the commission, this joint application for the two properties to be rezoned. And I just, I want to be clear, as I said before in the previous presentation, that for the future potential development of that property, we'd be willing and happy to abandon an existing access and create a joint access. I just want to be very clear that that is not something currently on the table, especially because Mrs Angeli still resides in that residence and we don't want to create that type of impact to her property at the time. I, is my understanding, Ford is on the call, he wanted to just be witness to this. I don't know if he has any, anything he wants to speak, but he's more than welcome to, but there's nothing in addition to the presentation you've seen previously in relation to this particular tract.
Is, you, there are no plans for it preliminary or visionary or anything at this point?
No, this is just to, in correlation with the zoning change, because at that point you're going to have an isolated single family property on 290 access. It's impractical, but that's just, you know.
And the reason for the neighborhood commercial designation is highest and best use or what?
That's just the function of the plum, so it was in coordination with the plum. And to provide potential more mixed uses of commercial on the two tracks of land, it was actually brought up during neighborhood conversations when we presented this to the neighborhood for our use. I had neighbors reach out to me directly telling me that they wish there was more amenity to the community and a neighborhood commercial would provide that amenity when that time comes.
Commission members, before we table this one also, is there, is there any questions or concerns about this piece of property as opposed to the 4800 property? That Mr Levy should know about before we go another month.
Commissioner Huerta.
Question for staff, Sylvia, Matt. If I recall correctly, this is the first time this particular tract has been up for rezoning, is that correct?
Correct.
So we don't have, we don't have the same precedent as we do on the corner?
No.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to confirm, thank you.
So from, just from a planning perspective and a staff perspective, Mr Levy is correct, the future land use map does call for neighborhood commercial in this area. It would be prudent for a shared access agreement within the development themselves and that's, that's going to be a function of the property owners because our city does not currently have a shared access ordinance requirement at this particular point in time. But leaving this one as single family residential will also pose an issue with the corner property because the screening requirements from commercial to residential are enormous and that doesn't take into account what the property may be, it takes into account what the property is zoned at this particular point in time.
So Sylvia, it's your opinion that we should go ahead and consider this request and have it out of the way so it makes the, makes it easier on the 4800 property?
That would be my recommendation, simply because they're two separate, they're two separate applications, they're two separate parcels, two separate ownership. And right now, one doesn't rely on the other. And it would be hard, I think in the future, to require a shared access agreement from Mr Levy on a residentially zoned property if we don't move forward. I see Commissioner Reitz has his hand up.
Yes, is it prudent for us to head down the path of a shared access ordinance?
I believe so, especially within areas that have impact to residential neighborhoods. I mean, the whole purpose of shared access is to limit driveways which increase safety because you, you know, right now, if you take the aerial of 290 in this section between Mr Levy's property and Mrs Angeli's property, there's about 85 feet. And then from Mrs Levy's, from Mrs Angeli's property to the next driveway, it's less than 40 feet. And from that driveway to the next driveway, it's another 30 feet. So there are four driveway cuts in that particular section of 290. And to have a shared access would limit it to one or two driveway cuts, which really increases safety in that area, in and out of, in and out of a speed that's coming off of that 290. And I can pull up the, I can pull up the aerial if the commission would like to see it.
Well, my question is, really is, is if we allowed it neighborhood commercial before we required shared access, would they be grandfathered?
Yes, because the ordinance is not in place at this particular point in time.
Seems like our best course of action would be to table and look at a shared access ordinance. Comments?
What, yeah. I don't know, I saw Mr Levy shaking his head at one point there, so I'm not sure how he feels about it.
Yeah.
Because an ordinance is like a whole nother. As I said before, this is a conversation for Ford and I separately, like you said, it's on a private matter, but we have a willingness to take the additional costs by deleting an existing access and moving to a shared access when that time comes in the future. Obviously, right now, this is, it's not the time for the use of that property. But when that property redevelops, that's something we're willing to put even as restrictive property that when that property is redeveloped, it requires share access. And I'm happy to avoid you having to go down the path of a new ordinance to get us to that. We're just making our request for current condition as, you know, and I'm not going to back to our case, we're obviously talking about this one right now, so I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think you understand what we think is the best course of action and.
Which is, Mrs Angeli's son, I believe, have some sort of agreement that you'd be working together on that, on a project next door. I mean, we're.
I can't.
You're talking about a shared access in the future and yet we don't know if there's an assurance that you guys would be working together on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it might be something that, as, I don't know if it's commission or staff that determines that established covenant of restriction, because like you're saying, I don't know who's going to be developing that property and Ford doesn't know and he himself may not have anything to do with it at that time and we certainly don't want to create an impact to Mrs Angeli's property in the current situation. However, if there's an opportunity to avoid ordinance and place some type of restriction or covenant around redevelopment of that lot and how that impacts a lot that we are trying to develop for future shared access, I'm happy to oblige.
If I may.
Mr Lowcock.
Yeah, so Mr Levy and I have talked several times, he's also spoken with mother several times. At this point, we would not agree to a shared access drive. As he states, this is mother's residence. She's 89. She does not wish to be in assisted living, she wants to remain in her home, possibly that's where she may pass away. Though any impact alone, most lines she would not agree to at this point. Just to be clear, but with that said, once she passes, there may be opportunities, there's no planning at this point for development of the property in any way and changing, so we haven't thought about it, the family passed that, so right now we will remain as a resident in its current state.
Thanks sir.
You're welcome.
Miguel, you have any thoughts on this?
I've been mulling it over and don't have anything original to say, so no.
Yeah, I think unoriginal.
Well, unoriginal, I mean, I think we should, we should definitely listen to Mr Levy and Mr Lowcock. They raised some very valid points about this is not the time. We do have a resident there, we don't want to force. I'm sorry, my microphone was up instead of in front of my mouth. We don't, we don't have a reason to force a joint use driveway while it's a residential property. I think Mr Reitz had a good, good question when he was asking about the grandfathering. Would they have to go to a, to a joint use? Probably not, but if they can handle it privately, then there's no reason for the ordinance. That's, that's my unoriginal thought, so I'm just going over stuff that people have stated before, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute now.
Go ahead John, go ahead John.
So, to me, whether it's, the whole issue seems to be the, the traffic flow coming off the ramp is impacting all of this, both properties. And to me, having a shared driveway where there's even more, more cars right there that close to Sterns and the traffic coming down off the ramp, it doesn't seem safer. If anything, it's, it's, it's not as safe. So I, to me, this whole thing hinges on what Text dot can, can kind of help us with here on this traffic flow. Because that's, that I think has been the problem with this property all along, going back for years. And to me, I don't see why, well, for one thing, I'm not sure why we even have this, number five here, the request for zoning change when the, when the property owner doesn't, has no interest in developing, developing it right now. I don't know who, who was it that wanted this? Was that you, Mr Levy?
Sylvia, the attention.
Identified properly, the, for zoning? Uh, identified properly the, the, for zoning, so that both of those properties can then be developed at some point? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, does it seem unreasonable to, to let Tech Dot work out this problem for all of us? And then, I see no reason why either property can't be zoned with the, neighborhood office and the neighborhood commercial until, and, and none of us is willing to actually approve anything until Tech Dot does their thing and your site plans come through, uh, the city and zoning and everybody and same thing next door to you when, when that's, when that's ready to go. So now we're, now we're stopping everything or, and waiting for, I know we've already voted on, on all this, but we'll take the tabling of your, your project. But the more I think about it, you were, you were trying to, as a business person, have those properties designated what's already on our Sunset Valley map?
Correct. Just very quick to speak to your point, and I don't want to cycle back around on the same issues over again. But it's, there's, there's two things that are independent of each other. Tech Dot's approval of an access and a safety concern around an exit ramp in relation to Stern's Lane and these properties. I want to be clear that in the conversations, both with the traffic engineer and Tech Dot, they are separating those items. And I've said very clearly to the neighbors as well, that the item of concern of the traffic hazard of an exit ramp in proximity to both their neighborhood and these properties is a long time discussion. And we're willing to join that discussion with Tech Dot to find, potentially mitigate those concerns. However, those concerns are unrelated to the access and accessibility of these properties. So I'll leave it at that, because I know we've, we've kind of been on this for a while. But from what you were, I just want to make sure, sure it's clear that those are actually two separate conversations.
Okay, right.
All right. Um, we got a little late from the, from the agenda here and never asked for citizen comments on this. And I want to know if there is anybody in the citizenry that would like to comment on this item.
I have Councilmember Rosengarten raising her hand. Councilmember Rosengarten, you are self-muted.
Folks, this is Rudy Rosengarten. My suggestion would be to table this.
I, I like the simplicity of it. Thank you, Rudy.
You bet.
Anybody else? I think I, I saw Carl raise your hand over there. But you're, you're muted right now.
Yeah. I think I'm there. There I am.
I, I got you now.
Harrison again. Mr. Lowcock, if I stepped on anything on your family's hands or anything like that, please, that was not my intent. I have known Ms. Angeli, I've known your mom for years. He has expressed for years an interest that she doesn't want construction anywhere near those. And it was really surprising when her own house got up, got put up for rezoning. So I, I didn't just go over there. I called her. And she's the one that suggested me typing something up, because she didn't have a computer or anything like that. I was gonna stand outside and just have her hand it to me, you know. Nothing nefarious was going on. She just, it was just a surprise. She didn't want the thing developed. But it was super duper surprising that her name wasn't on it, except power of attorney was on it. We're just trying to make sure that our neighbor was, was not being hindered in any way. And again, I know, I mean, no disrespect to you. I know you're the power of attorney. It's not trying to pull anything on you. We're just trying to make sure her wishes were being taken care of.
Since you know I'm the power of attorney.
And the traffic's the same, gonna be the same issue. It's right down the street from the other curb cut. So we need to get all that squared away before we really do anything. And down the road, I do agree, Ms. Angeli has left her house. Those two properties together would be a great thing to do. But she's still there, so we can't do that.
COVID-19.
No, wait a minute. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
Ford, go ahead.
Mr. Lowcock is speaking.
Wait a minute, Terry.
Yes.
Yeah, just a minute. We'll get you in a second.
All right.
Mr. Lowcock, you wanted to say something else?
About entering an 89-year-old woman's house during COVID-19, that kind of upsets me. So I don't believe you had a right to, to do that. And if you knew that I was the power of attorney, you should have approached me and not assumed that she, her wishes weren't to be given. We've been talking since January on this. And it is her wishes to go forward and assist Mr. Levy and his company in the building of it. She does not understand all, don't shake your head at me, sir. I talked to her after you were there. She ended up telling me, and this is a quote, "I wanted to be nice, so I signed." She does not understand the process. She would like for it to, to, to remain completely empty, but she also is a realist. She understands that it's gonna be developed. What Mr. Levy has proposed is a hall in, in accordance with what he has said all along since January, that he is taking her circumstances in, in, into consideration for privacy all the way through. And so she has told me point blank, "I don't understand. Please just handle it for me and let me know what's going on." I talked to her three or four times today before you arrived. And she did not know who you were. So her memory is not exactly what, what it's supposed to be. She's 89. She's 89. Talk to me, please, because I do have her best wishes in hand. She has made it very point that I am to handle this. That's why I have the POA and I'm working with Mr. Levy all, all the way through for mother's best interest.
Okay, thank you very much. Terry?
Yes, I want to speak in support of what Rudy said, to table this. And this is why, is this issue about joint use is a big one. And if, I'm gonna clam in the Wayback Machine with you guys. And way back when we did the master planning over there, the, the assumption was that they would be joint, a joint-use lane to avoid all these curb cuts that cause, that greatly increase the safety issues along the 290 access. That was actually planned, but it's a private matter. And as different developers came forward and asked for approval of plans that did not have that joint use in it, the subsequent zoning commission, the zoning commission recommended it and the council approved it. And that's how we're getting all of those curb cuts along 290. So we have an opportunity here, because Aaron's talking about, he's interested in working with this. I think he understands the advantages of it. If you make this commercial, neighborhood commercial tonight, you do grandfather it, and it won't be the opportunity to do, to do that. The, the alternative is to put that in as a restricted covenant, restrict, as a part of the zoning change to a neighborhood commercial. But we really need to deal with it. That, that, the situation with the curb cuts is, is, is causing a lot of problems over there. And you, and you guys already know how traffic stacks up and backs up from Brody to Stern's Lane during peak traffic. So we have big issues there. And there is an opportunity for us to try to fix them. So I think it's in the best interest of the community and the developers that this be tabled.
All right. No, no further citizen comment? You don't see anything, Sylvia?
No, no other hands are raised.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to item six and, which is our recommendation of the council. What's your pleasure?
I move that we table it?
I second that motion. This is Miguel.
All right, any further discussion?
Commissioner Reitz made the motion. Commissioner Huerta seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Boozer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Frick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Huerta?
Aye.
Commissioner Reitz?
Aye.
Chair Skewes?
Aye.
Item passes, table.
All right. I, I would like to thank everybody for their patience in our virtual meeting tonight. And Sylvia, thank you for helping me along the way.
You're very welcome.
Recognize a motion on the floor to adjourn?
So moved?
Seconded. And this is Reitz, seconded?
All in favor? Skewes says aye.
What, what if this is aye?
Commissioner Boozer?
Aye.
Commissioner Huerta?
Aye.
Commissioner Reitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Frick?
Aye.
Chair Skewes?
Aye.
Unanimous motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.